Good evening.
I'd like to call October 18, 2021, Wilson School Board Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Case?
Here.
Mrs. Casper?
Here.
Dr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mrs. Cocker?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McCray?
Here.
Mr. Negreeny?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the posting of the colors.
Up, forward. Forward, march. Up, forward. Colors, hold. Left, face. Sir, permission to post colors?
Post the colors.
Colors, post.
Good evening. As the board president, I want to celebrate the great things that have happened in our school district since our last board meeting. We had a fantastic homecoming event, including a carnival for our high school students. Our sixth graders were able to go to Camp Sotara and enjoy a great outdoor learning experience. Our younger elementary students got to participate in a field trip for the first time in over a year. We are so grateful for all the many comments, positive comments, we've received from many partners throughout the district. I also want to thank each of you for being here tonight, for taking the time to share your message. We truly do appreciate your time and your interest in the district. Thank you. Dr. Daniel Ever.
I have the distinct honor and pleasure of recognizing our students that reach commended and semifinalist status for the National Merit Scholarship. So what that is, is students take the PSAT, NSMQT typically in their junior year, and the numbers up there state that there's 1.5 million high school students that take it. That's in their junior year. Total that are eligible each year is about, actually, 3.8 million. Students that reach commended status are in the top 50,000 in the entire country. Those that meet the National Merit semifinalists are eligible to be finalists. They meet the top 16,000, which is amazing in its own right. So the one thing that I will say is these individuals work extremely hard, and while they are all exceptional students, they're even better young adults, which is pretty spectacular. I can speak to each of them individually. They're great. So at this time, I'm going to have our two commended students step forward for recognition. They are Ashida Kumar and Isabella Sanders. And for our four semifinalists, and to give this perspective, there were only 16 semifinalists in all of Berks County. So 25% of the semifinalists in Berks County are standing here this evening. So pretty spectacular. So we have Luke Klein, Nolan Pagolu, Methanj Singla, and Colby Snyder.
Congratulations on your efforts.
Mr. Hart. I just want to say congratulations on behalf of all of the school district for your hard work, your dedication to academics, and for being among, over the course of the past five years, this makes 24 National Merit finalists in the Wilson School District. So I think we should all be proud of that, but most importantly, you should be proud of your accomplishments because this is significant, and you are the best of the best. So thank you.
Congratulations. We didn't rehearse much, sorry. Thank you all. Mr. Maravich, we do have public participation on agenda items.
Thank you, President Hart. Rules of public participation for school board meetings pursuant to the sunshine, a lot of Robert's rules, and board policy, the following are the public participation rules. Individuals attending this meeting are expected to conduct themselves in a responsible, respectful manner. It does not disrupt the meeting. Public comment is not question and answer, but is instead an opportunity to offer comment on matters that are or may come before the board. All comments should be directed at the board as a body and not to any individual board member or administrator. Clapping, calling out, or cheering is not permitted, nor are conversations in the audience. Individuals may not approach the board tables at any time. Individuals shall make their comments from the speaker's podium. Comments are limited to three minutes. Any person making any threats of any kind, personal, offensive, or impertinent matters, or any person become unruly may be removed from the meeting or may be cited by local police. Above expectations are outlined in Board Policy 903, which is on the school district's website, embedded within board docs. Thank you.
First, Stephanie O'Brien, Equity.
One other thing, I'll try to let everybody know at one minute. So I'll say one minute. Apologize for interrupting everybody, but just so you guys know where your airtime lies. And I don't start the clock until somebody gets up and starts speaking.
Good evening and thank you. So I'll start with, Alice Paul was a pivotal catalyst in gaining women the right to vote. I had never heard of her until I was well into my twenties. I learned about her from Hollywood, but then I devoured everything I could find written about this woman. In short, if you're not familiar with Paul, in 1917, her and 1,000 silent sentinels began 18 months of picketing the White House, standing at the gates with signs such as, "Mr. President, how long must women wait for liberty?" They endured verbal and physical attacks from spectators which increased after the US entered World War I. Instead of protecting these women's right to free speech and peaceful assembly, police arrested them on flimsy charges of obstructing traffic. Paul was sentenced to jail for seven months, where she organized a hunger strike and protests. Doctors threatened to send Paul to an insane asylum and force-fed her. Newspaper accounts of her treatment finally garnered sympathy, and by 1918, President Wilson finally announced his support for suffrage. In the past few weeks, Texas has passed a law called SB3 that would essentially wipe out Alice Paul's story for nobody to ever hear. Not only that, George Washington, own a judge, Thomas Jefferson, Sally Hemming, the Fugitive Slave Act, the Indian Removal Act, the Chicano Movement, the Snyder Act of 1924, Martin Luther King's "I Have a Dream" speech, the 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendments of the United States Constitution have all been erased from K through 12, education, free speech, and civil discourse writings from Texas education. When we sit here, week after week, and say, "Why do we need an equity policy?", these are some of the reasons. I do not want my child, my daughter, not to learn about Alice Paul, or Susan B. Anthony, or the "I Have a Dream" speech. I want her to learn about everything. I want to give her her best chance. I wish I would have learned about Alice Paul in high school, but I didn't learn about it until much later. My life might have taken a different course. I ask you, please, make sure that this district adopts a formal equity policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caroline Clark, Equity.
Hi, my name's Caroline Clark, and I'm the parent of two children in the Wilson School District. I'd like to first just thank the school board members and recognize the effort and dedication you all invest in our district, and especially the time that you spend away from your own families in order to do so. It honestly baffles me why anyone would oppose an initiative that ensures that all the students in our district achieve success. Our kids and our students are all so different, so why would we want to treat them the same? Sometimes I think we get so focused on issues, words, terms, that we lose sight of the fact that public education is supposed to serve the public, all members of our community. An article I read recently resonated with me and said, "Equality focuses on what is fair within the group. Equity highlights what is fair for the individual." In public education, both group and individual needs are important. All students should have equal access to high-quality education, and once they get it, they should be afforded equitable supports to achieve success. I can only surmise that individuals who oppose the equity policy believe that it doesn't apply to them, or their children, or that it will somehow take something away from them. I'm sure people question why it is even needed, and don't realize that there are indeed students and families in our district who struggle with a multitude of issues that are probably foreign to most of us in this room. Things like food insecurity, access to technology, housing instability, mental health challenges, and lack of parental or familial support, just to name a few. I would encourage those people to open their minds to the realization that these issues are occurring in our schools, in our neighborhoods, and in some of our own families. The students in our district are going to grow up and influence how the future unfolds, and many will probably remain in this district or return, as evidenced by many of the individuals whom I've heard speak at these meetings and have referenced their own Wilson education. Don't we want that influence and potential that each and every student has to be positive? It is our responsibility as parents, educators, policymakers, voters, and simply human beings to ensure that every student has the resources, teachers, interventions, and supports they need to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ingrid Powers, Equity.
Hello. I've come up here week after week and given you examples of situations that have happened in our family or to my children, but tonight I just wanted to come up and say, "Thank you for your time. Thank you for taking the time to listen to all of us." I don't understand why equity would be something somebody doesn't want. Look at the six top children that were just up here. They're all different. I mean, all different backgrounds, but yet they all are excelling. I would want to know the history of everybody. Not just that, but also, it gives us all a sense of community when we all want to empathize with one another and learn each other. I don't see the harm in that. So, please make sure that... Not only that, my sister's a teacher at a different district, and she's at the point this is making her not even want to teach anymore. She said, "The fact that so many kids can opt out of certain things now, that you have to switch your lessons around." I mean, it's to the point where it's starting to be ridiculous. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Val Delp, Educational Equity Policy.
Good evening. While this is not really the focus of my being here tonight, I did want to take a few seconds just to address some statements made at the last meeting. I can't speak for anyone else here, but I have to say I'm a little disappointed that some board members felt the need to attempt to discredit the parents and community members who are here voicing their concerns. I just want to state that all of my family, friends, and clients in this community know my character, and that I've always placed an importance on ethical conduct and a high degree of integrity in every decision that I make. That speaks for itself, and I don't really want to focus on what you want to infer about us because I'm not here for me. I'm here as a former educator and a parent, out of concern for the future of our community's children. Now, I like to turn my focus to the educational equity policy. First, I do want to say that we do support equity. It is important. We do want everyone to be treated equally. That is not the concern. So the policy states that the district will be committed to ensuring that a student's educational achievement is neither predicted nor predetermined by explicit or implicit biases. I do agree with this statement, but we have already seen particular lesson plans this year that have violated this by inferring some students are predetermined to have to work through the same obstacles that their ancestors went through, when many of these obstacles are not nearly as prevalent in today's society. And then also inferring that some students are predetermined to have an easy path to success, when no individual experiences or family backgrounds are taken into consideration. I think there needs to be more training for educators on how to approach teaching historical facts without projecting political influence.
One minute.
Explicit and implicit biases of educators can also impact students. This also needs to be addressed. If a topic lends itself to bias for an individual, how will you ensure that the educator, administrator, student, or other staff can discuss or represent that topic in a non-biased way? And what will be done if it is discovered that a topic is being presented in a biased way? Lastly, in light of recent examples of students' opinions being used as a tool of discrimination, I would like to recommend adding political opinions to the list of principles of fairness and justice for all students. Diversity of ideas is just as important. It is what inspires ingenuity and progress, and I hope we can figure out a way to represent a variety of cultures, perspectives, and experiences in a positive way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Tammy Keener, Bullying CRT Equity.
Good evening. Thank you again for letting me speak tonight. My name is Tammy Keener. I am a Christian, a wife, a mother, a grandmother, and a United States Army veteran, holding three degrees. One in accounting and finance, one in business management, and I'm also a registered nurse. I graduated magna cum laude from Alvernia University. I have received numerous calls from parents and children in high school telling me that they are being bullied. Why don't they report it? Because nothing ever happens and nothing ever gets done about it, and they also fear retaliation. From what I can tell, girls are bullying the underprivileged. I believe that this is caused by teaching of critical race theory or equity. I have been coming to these board meetings and speaking in front of all of you for more than 10 years now. I have concluded that the board does not care what we have to say. Your job is to listen to the people and act accordingly. From what I can see, you all have your own agenda. My best guess is that you're politically motivated by the teachers' unions who are endorsing CRT. The teachers' union donates money for your campaigns, and to keep that money flowing, you are in turn supporting their agenda. Teaching should be neutral. Students should never know what the teacher's political affiliation is, and if they do know, you have failed as an educator. I attended the Finance Committee meeting on October 4. I attended the Finance Committee meeting on October the 4th. During that meeting, I learned that $1.7 million go to charter schools because parents prefer to enroll their children there than in a public school. Am I upset by this? No, I support it. The parents who have made the choice, this choice, because they no longer want their children to be educated at a school that indoctrinates their children by teaching critical race theory. Instead, they want their children to be taught to love America. Charter schools can provide resources and public, that a public school cannot do. Four of us are running for write-in as a candidate for the election on November 2nd. I have been threatened, stalked, and had over 45 of my signs stolen. Someone must fear me running for a non-paying public servant position. To all of you out there listening, this board does not listen to your wishes. I pray that the people of this district make a huge statement at the voting machines on November 2nd to make change to the board. You can't keep voting the same people in and expect different results.
Thank you.
Lisa Marie Stonaha, Equity Policy?
I participated in the Equity Roundtable, and upon reviewing the draft, it is concerning that the conversations had at my table and the report-outs are not fully represented in this draft. In fact, this policy seems much more extreme than the great and reasonable conversations that we had that evening. For example, we talked about biases being taken out, as you cannot tell someone they have bias. You can help them to see their biases, but you cannot tell someone they have a bias. The other main issue with this policy is there's no guardrails, and we talked a lot about this at the Roundtable. There's no protection for students, teachers, administration, staff, community, or even you. Here's why having guardrails is so important. In Silicon Valley High School, one teacher took it upon himself to teach the students about equity. He chose to do this through a white privilege walk. This resulted in him yelling at students that they were oppressed or oppressors. The students, finally having enough, as they quote, "didn't see things the way he did", unquote, they walked out. New York City schools are now currently phasing out gifted enrichment programs as they are deemed racist. At Loudoun County School, a student raped a female on school property, was then allowed back into the school because of the equity policy, and then he then raped another female on the school property less than a week later. In Virginia, schools' advanced math is eliminated until 11th grade, as doing it any earlier is deemed racist. And these are just a few examples of an equity policy going too far. Now, many of you are going to combat my speech by saying, "That won't happen here." Well, recently at Wilson, students were forced to give up their AP History class, as they did not want to write about our police systems being systemically racist. Some of these students were children of police officers. The only choice they were given was to drop the course, and there was no other AP equivalent available to them. We all heard Schuyler's story a few weeks ago, and we saw the divisive political cartoon. And before we get another lecture on context, let me be very clear. We have met with the teachers, the principals, and the administration on all the situations that we have found at Wilson. The reality is, you need to put guardrails on this policy. Your word of this is not enough. In August, this board said that equity is not CRT. Dr. Faedle assured everyone at the town hall that equity was not CRT. Those that spoke out against CRT were ridiculed by a few of your board members, and told us that we're pushing a false narrative and we're, quote, "not the real community". Yet, two board meetings ago, these same board members said there's no way they would ban CRT in our equity policy. So, excuse many of us, but we're not going to take your word for it. If you truly believe that this won't happen in here, put it in writing. Based on what has happened in the schools mentioned earlier, failure to put protection has resulted in forced resignations, lawsuits, and a complete turmoil in these districts. It is your job to see that everyone is protected by this policy, and currently you have big gaps. Put it in writing, so we don't become one of those districts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Neha Majmuddar, Equity Policy?
Good evening. My name is Neha Majmuddar, and I'm here to discuss this equity policy that's proposed. I have one child in 9th grade, one that's currently, one that's graduated in 2021. I think as a parent, as I've thought, one of my most important goals is that, am I preparing my child for the future? And are they going to be prepared? And as we discussed this equity policy, and I've sat through many board meetings and sat through the forums, I've always thought about this. Is this policy going to prepare my child for the future? And as I read the policy again, the answer is yes. First and foremost, we are addressing educational equity. As I sat through these discussions, all I've heard at board meetings is about cultural or racial equity issues. We have not discussed socioeconomic, gender, and physical barriers that the students face, but this policy clearly states what it address. From this policy, it is clear we are asking our stakeholders that are, what are our weaknesses that we might have in our student population? To me, this is similar to a standardized test that we take. We know, we can find out where we are weak, and we can improve upon them. We don't even know where we are weak. We won't know until we study it. The policy with its educational equity goal is clear, that it wants to remove barriers to helping our students, no matter what their needs, so they can graduate and succeed in their future. Secondly, this policy states that we should have topics, books, and ideas that address diversity. So, again, I ask you, will learning this prepare for our students for the future? To that, I have to say yes. My daughter, Amaya, was a 2021 graduate and is studying engineering at Columbia. So, you would think with engineering, she wouldn't need to talk about the topics that were taught in these classes, but that's wrong. She needs to take her managed classes, and during those classes, she has to have a clear understanding of implicit and explicit bias. She needs to have a clear understanding of the topics that are being said that we should not be discussing. And to have that understanding, we need our Wilson School teachers to be able to teach them and not ban them or taboo them. As I sat through these discussions, I can see that change is hard. The students of today are given the skills to deal with change and diversity, will be better prepared to work in and out of Berks County. As a board member, when you decide about this policy, I ask you, will this first help our students in the future? And secondly, please look at the policy itself, and not the topics that are being discussed, such as CRT, which I don't even see in this policy. So, I thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vin S.
Hi, my name is Vin Te Shaw. My daughter is in 5th grade in the Wilson School District. I've been sort of racking my brain for the last three days trying to figure out why I just could not sit down and write something, a prepared remark for this meeting. And it occurred to me as I'm sitting there, it's because I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed, and so I just want to start by saying, "I'm sorry. I'm sorry that I didn't come to the meeting sooner. I'm sorry that I didn't say 'thank you' sooner." So, first, I'm sorry, and second, thank you so much. Thank you for your time, for generously donating it to the community. I know that you're volunteers. Thank you for your compassion. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your grace. And as far as the equity policy is concerned, it blows my mind that we're even having this discussion, but please know that despite the fact that the volume of my voice may not be high, please know that there are many parents like me who support the proposal of the policy, who support enacting of the policy, and we're just so grateful. And again, I'm sorry for not coming out sooner, but please move forward with it. Please know that we support it, and please know that it means a lot to this community and to our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig Stonaha, Capital Expenditures?
First, thank you for the opportunity for speaking this evening. I've been doing some research into the capital projects that have been proposed recently, and there are a few things that I've been struggling with. It's been reported that we have seen a looming classroom shortage on the horizon for some time now. A shortage that has gotten to the point of needing modular classrooms at a couple of different schools. We're purchasing land in the county, or at least working on purchasing land in the county, and there's talks about an additional school in the district that seem to be coming up more and more frequently. At the same time, we're moving forward with a $36 million renovation and expansion of the auditorium in the Arts Department. What I haven't heard are discussions regarding expanding Shiloh and Spring Ridge Elementary Schools as a proposed option for the increase in classroom capacity and alleviating stress in the schools. As many here know, both of those schools were built with a specific intent to be a universal design that is pre-prepped for future expansion. Our former boards thought ahead and gave us the infrastructure to address this very scenario. As far as the community can tell, that option has been largely dismissed. Also, if the capacity issue is becoming so pressing that an additional school is required, why are we moving forward with a large capital expenditure right now for the auditorium? Wouldn't it make more sense to throw ourselves into long-term planning to address the classroom shortage and table large expenditures that are not required? I also haven't heard any talk about bonds or outside financing for these projects. The general thought process seems to be that the money will come from the community in the form of tax increases, but doing research, previous school expansions have frequently been funded with little or no tax increase. Finally, an additional school greatly expands our payroll requirements. New support staff, teachers, administrators, janitorial staff, cafeteria, bus drivers, buses, they'll all be required to support this new facility. These expenses are ongoing regardless of enrollment and almost guarantee tax increases. Not to mention the fact that we are assuming the labor shortage is not a long-term thing, as we are struggling to fill a lot of these positions now without an additional facility in place. Personnel expenses and retirement fund contributions were cited as the two biggest reasons this community had to absorb a nearly 6% tax increase this year. Wouldn't it make sense to pursue options that minimize personnel expansion? We need to take a more measured and long-term approach to district finances. Berks County is the second highest taxed of any county in the state. At the very least, we should be striving not to make that burden worse on our taxpayers. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you.
R.G. Hanson, Equity?
My name is R.G. Hanson. I'm a resident of the district. I have a 7th grader and a 10th grader, and I'd like to thank you all for your time and kind of echo what someone else said about your grace as well. I know that I can imagine how difficult this all is. I was fortunate enough to be part of the Equity Workshop and found myself at a table with someone that I knew. Following the workshop, we had the opportunity to discuss some of our thoughts and feelings about what came up for us during that workshop. And what surprised us both was our own implicit bias that came up when dealing with other people at the table. I'm close with this person, so we were able to have an honest conversation about that, how we thought about that, and how it applied to the equity policy. And while we can't tell people that they're biased, what we can do as adults and educators is acknowledge that we all have implicit and explicit biases. If you've worked with teens and developed a rapport with teens, of many of you have, and I've worked with teens for about 25 years, they ask you questions about yourself, if they like you. They want to know about your experiences and what you think. That in no way should have anything to do with how they are graded on something if they differ from you, but they're going to ask those questions, and it's important as educators and as an adult that we know how to answer them honestly, bravely. We've used the word "safe". I was told by someone who's kind of an expert in equity that "safe" is no longer, "safe spaces" is not the terminology. Brave spaces. These conversations are hard to have. When we have a safe space, it's implied that nobody's feelings are going to get hurt, or the conversations are going to be easy. These conversations are not easy, as we've seen here. So, if we're modeling appropriate behavior for teens, we should be having brave conversations and being honest about these issues. And that kind of brings me along to kind of this neutrality thing. We've seen in the news recently where neutrality can get us. We can express our opinions and not grade based on opinions. We should be leaving this stuff to the professionals, our teachers. And after reading some articles by Gloria Latson Billings and Kimberly Crenshaw in talking about CRT, they both explicitly said that CRT talks about systems being racist, and they both said in the articles and talks that I heard, "At no point does it say that white people are racist." This is important. They also mentioned that just mentioning race in a classroom is not the same thing as teaching CRT. CRT is a theory that race is a social construct, and that racism in the United States is an ordinary experience of most people of color, and that, okay. So, I just want to say that context and sources are very important when we're discussing these issues, and I want to thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Megan Crick, Equity?
Thank you for having me up here. I'm going to share something personal tonight. You're going to have to excuse me if my voice shakes a little bit on this one. Hoping a personal story might give another perspective as to why I think an equity policy is so important. There was a community survey put out by a few of the anti-equity groups in our community. In that survey, they asked for an opinion on teaching LGBTQ in schools. Question was poorly worded, biased, designed to instill fear, and extract a specific response. But beyond that, it's an attack on my child's community, a community that is four times more likely to attempt suicide than their peers. According to the Trevor Project, an LGBTQ youth between the ages of 13 and 24 attempts suicide every 13 seconds. That's 14 teens and young adults in just the time I'm going to stand up here tonight. It's a statistic that's hard to wrap your head around, and yet those statistics are part of my everyday life. To go a step further, as many as 55% of LGBTQ youth have reported feeling unsafe at school due to their identity. We are talking about one of the most vulnerable populations of young people, and that survey chose to make a political statement about them instead of protecting them. These are the attitudes that still persist within our community and across the country. These are the very attitudes that put our kids at risk. This is just one example of why we need an equity policy to protect our kids. I've watched a parade of school board hopefuls and their supporters get up here and speak. They speak about how they stand for all kids, right? No child's feelings should be hurt, and I ask you, what about my child? What about the other LGBTQ youth in our community? Not one of these people has pushed back against the harmful rhetoric coming from that survey. Not one. Let that sink in for a minute. So, maybe, as I have long suspected, all kids don't matter, just the ones that fit their narrative. You know who did care? Members of this school board cared. This school board cares. They listened to my ideas, expressed interest in my concerns, they made me feel heard. They are working with our community to form this equity policy, and I feel very lucky to be a part of that. When one fights against an equity policy or diversity training for teachers, they are fighting against my child's best interests. They are fighting against the very things that helped decrease those suicide statistics. They are fighting against my family. Having a child that is part of a marginalized community has taught me many things, too many to talk about here. It has shaped who I am as a person and as a mother more than anything else in my life, but the biggest gift it has given me is a deep understanding for the bias that marginalized communities can face. I've had a front row seat. I will never stop fighting for those communities. It's the least I can do with the privilege I've been afforded, and equity policy is the best way to not only protect my kids, but all kids. Please vote for the equity policy and vote to reelect our board on November 2nd.
Thank you.
Brian Chivinsky, 832, Education Equity?
I wonder if all who oppose the equity policy have read the policy. It defines educational equity as the allocation of resources based upon each individual student's needs. Equitable resources including funding, programs, policies, initiatives, and supports that are informed by each student's unique background and circumstances to provide them with the opportunity to create their own future. This is about ensuring each child has the best opportunities to create their own future. The policy lays out six common sense actions to support equity, and that the school will use quantitative and qualitative data to assess systematically which students and/or student groups are achieving at the lowest levels, determine why, and target resources and efforts determine why, and target resources and efforts to address and identify needs to improve the outcomes for them. Education equity should be supported to help every child work towards being the best version of themselves. Mr. Rogers said it best again. All of us at some time or another need help. Whether we're giving or receiving help, each one of us has something valuable to bring to this world. That's one of the things that connects us all as neighbors in our own way. Each one of us is a giver and a receiver. Neighbors, please help one another, support this equity policy, and vote November 2nd to reelect our existing school board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Victor Talata, Equity Policy.
Common refrain during board meetings is that the proposed equity policy has nothing to do with CRT. I disagree. The proposal invites the implementation of CRT, and the task force's words and actions inform that CRT is the goal. Consider that the Equity Task Force's YouTube video focused on racial equity. Then there is the Gorski article that was said to be driving Wilson's Equity Task Force. To summarize, the educational system must be analyzed for racism by activists trained to see racism in all things, then transformed to prioritize racial equity. The article goes on, "Anyone who questions these measures should feel uneasy, isolated, and on the outskirts. And we will find the will to implement the policy practice changes today rather than waiting for the elusive consensus. People of color are described only as a community, not as free-thinking individuals. Negative outcomes are because of racial bias, not one's decisions. And success is unattainable without accommodations, the soft bigotry of low expectations." To overcome racial equity failures, the article goes on to suggest asking, "How is racism operating here? Gather racial equity advocates in your school and map the ways that racial inequities persist. This is the notion that the system is racist, and if you look, you'll find racism." The article goes on, "The only way to redistribute access and opportunity is to prioritize the interests of students of color." Now, that sounds pretty racist to me. As parents, we demand the district provide equal educational opportunities for all students, not to redistribute taxpayer-funded resources based on race in fulfillment of some Marxist social engineering redistribution scheme. Deeper into the article, "Professional development opportunities related to equity should emphasize the ideological work required to more deeply understand the dynamics of racism in society and schools. It is not enough to not be racist. Educators must be anti-racist activists trained to indoctrinate our children that they're oppressed or oppressors, not individuals learning to be responsible for themselves." The Gorski article, which embodies CRT, did drive the work behind the Equity Task Force's latest equity policy, although its authors surreptitiously downplayed the focus on racial equity. There must be safeguards to prevent the proposed equity policy from serving as the vehicle by which CRT is implemented in the district. I ask the board to postpone work on the equity policy until such time as a resolution explicitly banning the precepts of CRT is implemented. If one thing has nothing to do with the other, then implementing such a resolution should not be a problem and will address concerns. There is an election on November 2nd. There are four write-in candidates who are on record as being against CRT. And I encourage the community to consider voting for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Randolph Blatt, Equity Policy.
And I made it less than two minutes, so I don't have to worry about you. Good evening. I'm not going to talk about politics. I'm not going to talk about details on the CRT and all that. I'm going to talk about you. I do not think at this time we require an equity policy. There is not enough of data, facts, and findings regarding justification to the established a policy now. The community representation was a farce. The number from the community who pay the taxes, who paid for all of this, was next to nothing. And it was horrible. As Mr. Dave Weimer, who happens to be here tonight, stated, "Why don't we use the superintendent's goals, results? Use both quantitative and qualitative information, after which we come up with findings, conclusions, and recommendations. Then, then hold meetings with the community, open meetings, not this crap. Also, do not lower our standards at Wilson, as one board member suggested. Instead, do benchmarking, if you know what that means. Of the Wilson schools, Wilson West, Middle, Shiloh Hills, and Spring Ridge made the top 250 and 500 by U.S. News &amp; World Report."
One minute.
Raise the bar of education, not lower it, and not be proud of being in the lower one-third of a millage tax rate. When we were on the board, we had the lowest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Janakovo, Educational Equity and Inequality.
So on August 2nd, we're told an equity policy is needed to understand if there's a problem at Wilson. It's been asked of this board to bring forth five to 10 areas of focus of inequity so we can work on them. Well, I have here teacher and student answers to survey questions about race inequity at Wilson. These answers were given after showcasing the Wilson Equity Task Force introduction video, a video which 100% conflated the topic of race inequity as one, despite this same body consistently asserting that educational equity has nothing to do with race. How can this body debate and construct an equity policy when teachers, in their own words, have identified institutionalized inequity created by Wilson? How can this body have an informed debate when apparently not all board members have this very information? Fundamentally, should this community trust the board, which brings forth only answers which support their positions, all while ignoring the realities of inequities created and held up by the very same body? In light of what I'm about to read, how is it possible to have a policy on top of inequitable structures you govern? Would it not make more sense to address these inequities here head-on? Resolve them and then move forward? Some in this body dismiss, denigrate, and support false theories about parents like me and others in this community. Let's see if it'll do the same to your teachers. Quote, "Students are not getting the same learning experience at the two middle schools." Quote, "The location of buildings, the opportunities that are offered are not consistent between buildings." Quote, "The district needs to do a better job in hiring all employees of different races. Buildings, materials, resources need to be equitable between buildings." The economic discrepancy between the haves and have-nots is the catalyst for a lot of conflict. There's always conversations about the difference between Southern and West in student-teacher conversations, even down to facilities, construction projects, and academic offerings at each building.
One minute.
The single most damning statement is this. One example of systemic bias was how students became tracked in math classes, which results in students' paths and opportunities being determined early in their academic career. So that's inequity right here at Wilson, governed by this administration, oversaw by this board. We go on to have a summation of teacher responses in regards to racism that's most concerning. Paraphrasing, contingent of people that do not see any racism. Students do not understand the term racism. This also applies to our staff. Surprised that they don't see student-to-student racism, or surprised they see student-to-student racism, but not teacher-to-student racism. Exactly what is this person who summarized these survey answers with these statements saying about teachers at Wilson? Are they saying they're ignorant? Are they saying our teachers are unable to define racism? Are they saying our teachers are blind to racist actions from their peers?
Please wrap up.
No need to waste any more time on a new policy. There's an abundance of time needed to immediately address these issues I've just brought to light.
Thank you.
Jennifer Denny, Equity Policy.
Good evening. I had the opportunity to participate in the roundtable that we had here on the equity policy a few weeks ago, and I know many of you were there. I was on Mr. Snyder's table and got to know him. And I really want to encourage you to pass that policy. It was good before, but it was better after the roundtable and the input that all of the different people provided. I know a lot of people who have spoken have been conflating CRT inequity, and they're not the same thing. And one of the ways I know that is that we did, in fact, in our group, discuss barriers that come to children of color in our school district. Personally, I'm excited that Wilson has become so much more diverse. The Wilson I graduated from had maybe a dozen families of color in the whole school. It wasn't until I went to graduate school that I was really in a diverse educational environment. Today, my children, who are 10 and 13, have very diverse classrooms. And we did discuss some of the barriers that they have, but as much or even more so than children of color. We talked about three other groups that face issues at school. One is children of special needs learning. Wilson has made a definite attempt to integrate those children into classrooms. Whereas when I went to school here, all of the kids in high school were down in one classroom in the basement, and everybody avoided that room. We didn't know the children who had special learning needs because they were different from us, and that showed in how we interacted with them. Now that they're integrated into the classroom, there's needs that need to be met, barriers that need to be addressed. Second group that we talked about that have special needs are LGBTQ children. And I believe it was Mrs. Crick spoke to that a little bit. But we had a woman in our group, a recent graduate from 2020, who self-identified with that group. And one of the things that she talked about was it was always a challenge for her to figure out what classrooms, what teachers were safer when she needed to have some space. The Trevor Project, which was also already referred to, has talked about some of the statistics for suicide in children in the LGBTQ community.
One minute.
One in five attempt suicide, one in five. And for this young woman, she needed to know classrooms that were safe for her to go to. One of the members in our group, he was a big guy, said that sometimes people might not know that he's safe to come to. He's a teacher at Southern, and he had considered putting up a rainbow flag, not because he was trying to indoctrinate anybody or sell any particular philosophy, but because he wanted kids to know it was safe. And that's the kind of thing we have to look at as a bearer of education. How can this school let children know where they can be safe? In terms of the CRT policy, I know people have said, "Please pass something saying we're not going to have that in our school." We don't have it in our school. And asking this board to pass a policy that's going to affirmatively state we're not going to have it is a slippery slope. We've seen what happened in Lancaster and York where they banned books. We've seen what's happened in Texas, where they've listed all the things you can't teach on. CRT is not in our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dwight Wegman, New Policies.
Good evening, board. Thanks for the opportunity. So tonight's meeting agenda presents us with 10 new policies to review. I've been attending board meetings for the past four months, and there were no new policies or policy revisions introduced. And now tonight, we have 10 dropped in our lap. It is difficult to review 10 policies within a few hours in order to properly comment. It would have been nice for the board to be transparent with the community about what you were working on and planning to present to us. Other than the equity policy, I'm unaware of the public asking for updates to these policies. But regarding the equity policy, I note that there is a recommendation to hire a diversity, equity, and inclusion officer. I have no doubt that if that policy is approved, we will have a whole department of staff devoted to equity and inclusion. And this new staffing expenditure comes on the heels of a 5.6% property tax increase for property owners in Wilson. And one more question. Would the equity policy protect Skylar and her horrible experience she told us about a few weeks ago because of her conservative views in this very room? I'm just asking. However, one thing the community has been requesting for the past few months is a resolution on no CRT in the Wilson schools. That is a topic of interest to the community, yet there's no action on it. So there's time to work on all of these other policies, but no time to work on a no CRT resolution. All of us heard Dr. Faedley say during the summer that CRT is not being taught in Wilson. One would think that if that is the truth, that it would be an easy thing to put forth a resolution stating and confirming that position. Where is it? Has something changed in the administration of board's position regarding CRT at Wilson? Doesn't the Wilson community have a right to know where each board member stands with respect to the teaching of CRT in the classroom at Wilson? But there is an election in two weeks where four incumbents are on the ballot. Is that the reason why we haven't seen the no CRT resolution presented for a vote? Doesn't the board believe that parents and voters have a right to know where their school board representatives stand on the issues? Why does the board continue to avoid answering the community's question? It's not complicated. Either you are for CRT or against CRT. To not answer the question means you don't want to reveal your position and communicates a lack of transparency with the community. The Wilson community is smart. They see exactly what is happening here, and the community is very excited to vote on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Kaminski, First Read Policy.
I agree with the previous speaker that it's difficult to cover 10 new first readings in a meeting in a 24-hour period. I'll start with a quote from James Madison from the Federalist Essays, Number 62. "It will be of little avail to the people that the laws are made by men of their own choice, if the laws so be voluminous that they cannot be read, or so incoherent that they cannot be understood." In another section, there was a commentary about "beyond the grasp of ordinary people." I only looked at two policies. Policy 832 will have to wait for another time. Looking at Policy 006 about meetings, I have a distinct problem with the voting called out. There are four different areas covering voting. One says that nine board members have to vote positively, unanimous consent, if a board member resigns to become the board attorney or the board secretary. Interesting. I believe that's a state law or a state statute. The second is two-thirds of full board have to vote to select seven actions or agree with seven actions. Two-thirds of the full board is 6.6 people, so I assume that means seven have to vote positive. Dismissal after hearing of a tenured professional employee is a PA statute, and that requires seven votes, in my opinion. The third one is two-thirds of a quorum, which is five people, two-thirds is 3.33, so I assume that's three people, are required for the only action listed, adopt or change textbooks without the recommendation of the superintendent.
One minute.
I find it interesting that that has a cite that goes to something that doesn't say anything about textbooks. Finally, there are three different areas where a majority of the full board have to vote on. It calls a majority five votes. The last time I checked, majority means more than 50%. It says five votes, written and Arabic numeral. Five out of 10 people who can vote, board secretary doesn't vote. Five out of 10 people who can vote, board secretary doesn't vote, means that it's, doesn't meet the majority definition, okay? There are 30 separate actions. Three I want to talk about. One superintendent has, they need five books to recommend a book or approve it if the superintendent recommends it, but only three minimum if he does not recommend it. That seems like a disconnect to me. There are other things in that area. Sites at the end don't comply either. Doesn't make sense. This is an example of what I saw in 832 also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda Burley, Equity Policy.
I didn't prepare any official remarks, so I kind of feel like a student who forgot to do their homework. But I wanted to start out by thanking you all so much for all the work that you have done on this equity policy. I thought it was very clearly laid out, and I can tell you've put a lot of, a lot of care and a lot of thought into it, and I appreciate that. Speaking as a parent, I think this policy is great, and I hope you adopt it immediately. I would like my children to grow up in a world where striving for equity is the norm. It's what everybody agrees on, and it's not a controversial thing. Speaking as a former teacher, I taught high school before I had kids. I also think that it would be a really good thing for you to adopt this policy. When I, when I think back to my early years of teaching, those first couple of years, one of, actually really the big regret that I have is that I was unaware of my inherent biases. And that wasn't really a thing that we talked about like a decade ago. Like, it was, just wasn't on the, on the national conversation, so to speak. And I wish it had been, because I feel like I could have served my students better if I had had conversations with other educators about how to be aware of your biases and how to make sure that you are serving your students equitably and making sure that those biases are not interfering with that. So I, I hope that after this, this policy is put into effect, I'm being hopeful here, but I hope that after the policy is put into effect, the teachers will be talking about it more and, and making themselves aware of where they personally can do better and having the help to do that, so that you're not just trying to figure it out on your own. You know, you're working as a community to all strive for that equity together. So again, thank you for all the hard work you put into it. Please, please vote yes on this one.
Thank you.
President Hart, that's all of the agenda items.
Thank you, Mrs. Cocker. We did not, the Board did not-
I'm sorry, President Hart.
Yes.
I have one. Leah Perella on equity.
Okay, great.
Hello, my name is Leah Perella. First, I want to thank the school board members for all of your time and dedication in serving the Wilson community. I know there's a lot of time involved between the twice-monthly meetings, the monthly committee meetings, and any other work that happens between all the meetings to continue to drive change and make decisions to best support our students in the Wilson School District. I wanted to share some thoughts I have today regarding equity at Wilson. I am in full support of an equity policy for the Wilson School District. I have a daughter in sixth grade at Southern Middle School. While I have lived in Wilson School District for over 10 years, my daughter just started attending Southern, so I am invested in her success as well as the success of all students at Wilson. Part of ensuring their success is having an equity policy. Allow me to share an example of how equity is impacting my daughter at Southern. The previous school my daughter attended had outside recess for over one hour each day all the way through eighth grade. Through various books and articles I have read over many years, I know how important recess is in order for children to succeed in the classroom. I quickly discovered at the start of this year that the only recess option for middle school at Southern was to head outside after lunch, which amounted to about 10 minutes of recess each day. I was disappointed to learn of such a short duration for recess, and I was further saddened when my daughter came home and told me that her recess had been cut in half and that now she and the other sixth graders are only able to go outside every other day for 10 minutes. I was super disheartened to hear this, especially given how nice the weather is at this time of year. Kids are much more successful in the classroom when they spend time outside enjoying fresh air. This allows kids time to relax and unwind, perhaps get some extra energy out so that they can come back into the classroom and better focus on learning the information their teachers are presenting to them during class. I have come to learn that students at West are still enjoying recess every day after lunch. Additionally, I did reach out to the administration team at Southern and was told that the support staff is not at full capacity, and there were issues during recess with rough play and other concerning behaviors. I am frustrated that all kids are being punished for the behavior of some students. I would hope that the administration could work with the students displaying inappropriate behavior to get them back on track so that all students can enjoy their time outside. Most likely, the kids causing issues need the recess break the most. We need to allow our middle school students to have a break outside every day, no matter what the weather is. I will leave you with these thoughts. Let's have equity for Southern and West and get our middle, our Southern middle schoolers back outside every day. There is no bad weather, only bad clothes. Let kids be kids.
The Board did not meet an executive session since our last meeting. Looking for motion to approve the minutes of the school board meeting held on October 4th, 2021, as attached. Mr. Martin, first. Do we have a second?
Snyder, second.
Mr. Snyder, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chairman support, Mr. Martin. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
McCray.
Mr. McCray. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Payment bills. Mr. Martin.
Mr. President, I submit for approval tonight. The bills as following. General Fund, $2,697,868.93. At the Capital Reserve, $9,532.25. The 2019 Day Construction Fund, eight, I'm sorry, $817,320.67. And now the 2021 Sea Construction Fund, $192,256.81.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Schneider.
Mr. Schneider. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
That's nine yes, zero no.
Superintendent's report, Dr. Faedley.
Thank you, President Hart. This evening, I present the personnel and program recommendations as listed.
President Hart, sorry, financial reports, I think.
Pardon me?
You missed the financial report?
Number five.
I apologize. Financial reports. Mr. Martin.
Mr. President, I submit for the financial reports, all for the month of September. The Cafeteria Report, the Childcare Report, and the following Activity Report, Southern Middle School, Western Middle School, and the Senior High.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Case.
Mr. Case, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
One moment, please. Payment bills. Mr. Martin, I'd like to redo that one. I need to abstain on that, so let's please have a motion a second again, please.
Payment bills.
Could you make a motion again?
I don't want to.
Just make a motion to pay the bills, since we're already-
I want to make a motion, Mr. President, to pay the bill that's been in the hand for-
Thank you. Do we have a second?
So moved, Case.
Mr. Case, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
One moment, please. Payment bills. Mr. Martin, I'd like to redo that one. I need to abstain on that, so let's please have a motion a second again, please.
I'm sorry.
Payment bills. Could you make a motion again?
I don't want to.
Just make a motion to pay the bills, since we're already-
I want to make a motion, Mr. President, to pay the bill that's been in the hand for-
Thank you. Do we have a second?
So moved, Case.
Mr. Case, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
That's eight yes, zero no, one abstain.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, Dr. Faedley.
Thank you, President Hart. This evening, I present the personnel and program recommendations as listed.
Looking for a motion to approve Superintendent, items 6.1 through 6.9, as attached.
Casper?
Mrs. Casper, first. Do we have a second?
Cocker.
Mrs. Cocker, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Abstain.
That's eight yes, zero no, one abstain.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, Dr. Faedley.
Thank you, President Hart. This evening, I present the personnel and program recommendations as listed.
Looking for a motion to approve Superintendent, items 6.1 through 6.9, as attached.
Casper?
Mrs. Casper, first. Do we have a second?
Cocker.
Mrs. Cocker, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Approval of field trips. Mrs. Cocker.
7.1, request permission to approve a second trip to St. Anne's Bay, Jamaica, for 24 high school AP Environmental, AP Biology students from February 6th to February 14th, 2022, six days out of school. Approximate cost to students is $2,300. Cost to the district is eight substitute teachers for four days. Students will be chaperoned by Mr. Doms, other chaperones to be determined. Students must apply and get recommendations from five prior major subject teachers. Students are responsible for all work missed while in Jamaica. Trip insurance will be included in the price if the trip is canceled. All travel regulations required by Jamaica will be followed.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Case.
Mr. Case, any discussion?
Mr. Hart, I'd like to make a comment. I just want to thank Mr. Doms for continuing to provide these opportunities for our students year after year. This is, this is above and beyond the call of duty for an educator, and the experiences that students have while studying in Jamaica are memorable for the rest of their lives, and I think he should be commended for providing that opportunity.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I point out a disconnect? Under subject, you say two substitute teachers for six days, but in the description at the bottom, you say eight substitute teachers for four days. Which one is it?
I think we should be voting on this as well, too. I mean, it's financial, so I think we should be voting on it. I don't think this is a yes or a-
The general standards by school has to be very long.
Right. Okay, we have a, can we get clarification on the personnel first, please?
Two.
Yes, I'll get clarification.
Two for six days. The top one is accurate.
The top one is accurate. So I think we can amend the motion, and my apologies for the inaccuracy.
With the amended motion, can we have a first?
So moved.
Mr. Case, first. Do we have a second?
Schneider.
Mr. Schneider, second. Any discussion?
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Under Student Services, 10.1, request approval of an addendum to the service agreement with maximum healthcare staffing services for direct placement be used for candidates in two vacant positions at a total cost of $7,000 per candidate for two candidates. Looking for a motion?
McCray.
Mr. McCray, first. Do we have a second?
Casper.
Mrs. Casper, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Consent items, Mrs. Cocker.
Request to accept with gratitude the following donations. From Bob Chapel, a check in the amount of a thousand dollars to the Grand View Gallery for the director of the gallery to use as he sees fit. From Tammy Ryder, fifty-plus bottles of hand sanitizer and one bin of masks to be used at Green Valley Elementary School. From Southern Middle School Student Council, a check in the amount of five hundred dollars to help, to help defray the costs of Fun Day for Southern Middle School students. From various artists and collectors, list is attached. Thirty-five pieces of artwork to the Grand View Gallery, Robert H. Chapel collection. And from Weiss Markets, a check in the amount of four hundred dollars to be used for supplies for students at Shiloh Hills Elementary School.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Dr. Kennedy, any discussion?
Uh, President Hart?
Yes.
Um, I had the opportunity to attend the Grand View Gallery dedication uh, as the Robert H. Chapel, uh, ga- collection. And, um, as you can see around our, around the room and in the hallway and lobby, Mr. Chapel was an art teacher, um, at Wilson, and he is the person that started the Grand View Gallery over twenty years ago. Um, and the dedication ceremony was, um, had the collection of art teachers that he influenced, students that he influenced over thirty years. Um, and it was just, it was really nice to have everyone that appreciated him come together, um, and everyone that appreciates art, um, because of him, come together. So I think it makes a really important statement that when you walk, the first thing you see when you walk into our admin building is the art, um, that Mr. Chapel influenced, and he's continuing to do so, do so by continuing to, to contribute to the Grand View Gallery. So I just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There are human resources. Nine point one, request approval of the revised support staff handbook. Nine point two, request approval of the revised support staff salary ranges. Looking for a motion to approve nine point one and nine point two as presented.
Cocker?
Mrs. Cocker, first, do we have a second? Dr. Kennedy, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Under Student Services, ten point one, request approval of an addendum to the service agreement with maximum healthcare staffing services for direct placement be used for candidates in two vacant positions at a total cost of seven thousand dollars per candidate for two candidates. Looking for a motion?
McCray?
Mr. McCray, first, do we have a second?
Casper?
Mrs. Casper, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Under Finance, eleven point one, in accordance with the governmental accounting standards, Board Statement Number Fifty-Four, the Board approves the transfer of one million dollars to the Capital Reserve Fund as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and commits the remaining excess of revenues over expenditures from two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one in the general fund for future piers of employer, employer contributions. Looking, sorry. Eleven point two, request approval of accelerated budget opt-out resolution for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. Eleven point three, request approval of the budget transfers dated July first, two thousand and twenty-one through October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one as attached. Looking for a motion to approve finance agenda items eleven point one through eleven point three as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Martin, first, do we have a second?
Negreany, second.
Mr. Negreany, second. Any discussion?
Mr. Hart, I think it's just important to go back to eleven point two that the resolution indicates that this board is making a commitment not to raise taxes above the Act One Index, uh, so that way we do not need to, uh, perform a, um, accelerated preliminary budget. I think it's commit, uh, commitment of this board to the community, regarding that particular piece of the budget process for next year.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Under Transportation, twelve point one, request permission to purchase a new truck at a cost of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars from the New Holland Auto Group. Looking for a motion?
McCray?
Mr. McCray, do we have a second?
Negreany, second.
Mr. Negreany, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Under Policies, Mrs. Cocker, I did not ask you this, but could you please read through the first reading of Policies? Of policy names?
Sure. Um, first reading of the following new and/or revised policies. Zero zero six, meetings. Two eighteen point two, weapons or the replicas. Two eighteen point three, terrorist threats or acts. Two thirty-six point one, threat assessment. Two forty-seven, hazing. Two forty-nine, bullying or cyberbullying. Two fifty-one, homeless students. Eight oh five, emergency preparedness and response. Eight oh five point two, school security personnel. And eight hundred and thirty-two, equity, educational equity.
Thank you. Sorry for the last minute request. Any discussion on these policies? Mr. Martin?
Yes, uh, I, to be honest with you, I didn't have a chance to go through them all, but, uh, actually I got an email today, uh, from one of our constituents, constituents, I'm sorry, concerning proposed policy zero zero six. Uh, basically it says this policy as written prohibits any board member from introducing an agenda item. It's solely up to the board president and the superintendent unless five board members agree to add it. This is not a democratic process. Any board member should have the right to request an item on the agenda. If there's no sec, then fine. That, then that agenda item will not be voted on, but at least that elected official would have a right to express his opinion. I just got, I got this at, uh, one forty PM today, and I agree with, I haven't read it, and I apologize for not reading it. I was more putting my attention on another policy, which I'll talk to in a minute, but, uh, I believe there's some validity to what this, uh, person has been saying. I think it's important that every board member has a right at any time to express his opinion and have something on the agenda. It should not be up to the president, it should not be up to the superintendent, and nor should it be up to the five board members, because that then is free speech and the ability to negotiate through a very, you know, democratic process. Everybody should have a right, and I, I believe that, uh, policy needs to be addressing those issues.
To effect. I could probably do without it, but then the people at home won't hear. Um, the, uh, that's the set, there are the requirements now with respect to agendas, publishing of agendas prior to the meeting. That's talking about additions to agendas, so that's not requiring five people to approve everything that goes on the agenda. That's merely addressing what can be added to agendas. So that was a change under the Sunshine Law that went into effect, uh, the end of September, so applicable to our first October meeting.
Okay, well, once again, I apologize, I did not read this particular, uh, policy, and I will definitely get back to this individual, but, Mr. Maravich, uh, would it be accurate to state that the policy revisions that are included in Policy Zero Zero Six are those that have been recommended by our legal counsel?
Yeah, yes.
As per the changes to the statute?
Right, so that's how, as was addressed by a couple of people in the public, a lot of these changes are merely changes where the school code, Sunshine Law, or open records law, any of the various laws that are applicable. I think one of them that was changed is related to a federal law change. Those changes are then made by, recommended by legal counsel, which is what these are, this is language that is specifically right out of the amendments to the Sunshine Law that apply to this year. So it's not an attempt at any super majorities or anything like that. This is what the actual school, the actual Sunshine Law says. It's applicable to municipalities and school districts.
Okay, just let me, since I have this in front of me, and so, if, if the board president doesn't want to put something on the agenda, how does it get an agenda then?
That's in another policy, which requires three people to recommend something to go on the, under the policy.
All right, okay.
But that...
Did you have that policy so I can show this individual? Afterward, after we're done?
Sure. Yeah, this, this is not talking about putting something on the agenda, it's talking about amending agenda.
Okay.
Uh, this is, this is, the whole provision is about publishing the agenda before, I mean, to some extent, some of what the, what the Sunshine Law amendments required, Wilson was already doing, uh, but this is conforming the policy to what the law now says.
All right.
And I believe that, I believe that's the sic, the case with hazing and a couple of the others. It's just either changes in case law or changes in statutes that required some updating. I mean, there's, there's thousands of policies. I mean, if you ever really want to be a school outlawyer, probably could just send, spend all your time reading the school board policies, and you'd learn it all, because they're all eventually embedded in all of those. The laws are, with now board docs, you can hopefully click on and then go to the statute as well.
All right, thank you.
While we're on the topic, just so the public's aware, uh, we receive these Friday morning, uh, as a first reading. So between first, second, and third reading, as everyone would know, we have five weeks to look at a policy. So we're not going to catch it possibly this weekend or on this first Monday. Plenty of time to talk about this stuff and, and read and review. And, uh, I thank the gentleman, you know, in, in the back that actually pointed out a couple of things that, you know, through the weekend reading were missed. So, um, excited to review some more policy. And, uh, and Mike, just in general, you take the opportunity, rightly so, you exercise the right to talk at the end of meetings. If there's something you want to pitch, and someone, three members are not pitching your, or, or want to put something on a agenda, you can talk about that publicly, like you do already. So you have that channel, we all have that channel. So no one's taking away anyone's ability to, you know, talk with the public.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not questioning, but it, it prevents the ability to get it on to the agenda. I mean, I'll have to look at that policy, and I'll, you know, I'll read this in more detail, and I'll reply to this gentleman, too. But the, the, the situation is, everybody has a right to talk at any point in time, and I agree with that and our other business, so... But we'll, we'll talk more once I have a chance to go through more of this. But I do want to address, uh, the equity situation, equity policy, and, um, and this is, I'm probably going to offend both sides of this. But first of all, I don't think there's any board member here that does not want to see every child succeed. It's how you do it. Uh, this policy, the way it's written, and I'll explain in more detail, doesn't really do what it's intended to do, but... And part of that is because, other than myself and Jay that has experience reading legal documents, I don't think there's very few people in this board that understand the reading between the lines of this policy, and that is part of the issue. You need to understand the impacts and what the recourse would be for the, for the taxpayers as well as this district, so... Uh, I know it gives everybody a warm and fuzzy feeling, and that's great, but as written, it does have overtones which would give almost any organization the ability to bring CRT into the school. And you'd probably say, well, that's not right, but, okay. I'm going to get through all this, I got, bear with me. But it will open the school to countless lawsuits. Uh, as in essence, the policy provides an IEP for every student. It states it right in the policy. So every IEP, every student would have the right to have an IEP. It's in there, it's written. Uh, it would, if this was approved, it will double taxes within five years, your taxes will double. Uh, hiring practices, it's, it's, it's very questionable about hiring practices, lowering the, the standards for our hiring and, and putting a quota system in. And the problem with that is, okay, let's just take, uh, sports, okay? Are we going to say, okay, seventy percent of you guys have to be here, thirty percent of you are here? No, it doesn't work that way. You can't have it both ways. Either you have a policy that's universally applied to every aspect of every part of the education, or you don't. And to me, you go for the best person, just like in sports. You're not going to tell a, a student, you can't participate because you don't fall into this category. Your, your percentages are out of base. That's what we're trying to do with this policy. It doesn't work that way. It shouldn't work that way. You hire the best person, you play the best people, whether it's in soccer, whatever sport you may choose. It's very important to keep that in mind. This will have the potential to lead to redistricting. You could hire an expert, it talks about experts coming in. Well, Shiloh Hills, you don't quite have the right segregation in that area from the standpoint of, you don't have this minority, you don't have that. We need to make sure we address that, so we'll redistrict, because you can't bus, but we can redistrict. These are just some of the things that this, this is opening the door to. And I see people up there looking, and I understand that. And I, I love, by the way, I'll hear, I'll stay here till midnight if you want to talk about this, and I love to do that. That's why I, I do this every day. And it's, it's going to impact home and school associations. What happens if home and school station raises fifty doll, I'm sorry, fifty, more than that, fifty thousand dollars for a new playground or equipment? What happens if Coromandel's doesn't have that same equipment? What do we do? What do we do? Well, we've got to make good for that. We've got to make sure it's equitable. So we've got to fix that situation. So there's a lot of things that you need to look at this. Ah, let's see, uh, let's see. And let's not forget where the equity policy came from. Everybody knows, well, not everybody knows where it came from. It came from the National School Board Association, which was handed down to the state school board associations. And we know that the National School Associations has urged a president to label parents, and somebody mentioned about this, domestic terrorists. Well, that's an issue. That shows you a very center-left type of organization. PSAB picked up on that, they sent it out to the school districts. And now PSBA says, we no longer want to be part of the National School Association because of their leftist policies or tendencies to go beyond what would be expected in education. With that said, our Pennsylvania School Board Association is still centered left, and this policy is written in such that there's, they have a lot of attorneys working on this stuff that leaves these doors open for so many different things I just mentioned. The, the, as I said, the Pennsylvania School Association doesn't, represents, it's a nonprofit organization. It doesn't represent all schools, and the last thing they sent out, only about thirty schools responded. So their guidance, so many schools don't, don't follow PSBA. They rely on it for certain things, and they do, do certain things quite well. But keep in mind that they're not, they don't make us do what we want to do. This board does what they want to do. And I'm not sure if we talked about, you know, there's, there's widespread community support for this, and there may be, I don't know. We'll see, we'll see. But, but I can tell you that the committee that was assembled to review this, if you live in that room, seventy-five percent of those people are educators. Does that make it bad or wrong? Well, it does lean to a certain outcome, and that's what we're trying to avoid. We talk about outcomes. Well, this was a preordained outcome. We knew what the outcome was going to be. There was very little discussion, some tables. My table, I think there's, I really see at least three or four people here. The table I sat at was all educational professionals. The outcome was given. I, I didn't say anything. I mean, I, I answered a couple of questions, but I, I really didn't get involved in it because we weren't allowed to speak or we weren't allowed to offer our opinions, but that's not, that's not a community. You, if, if community, it should be segments from every section, you know, this or that or this. So the, the, the talk about this was done by the community, that's, that's up for debates. Uh, okay. And, and there's, there are issues coming to this, this situation. I, here's, within the last thirty days, I have been advised by different parents that the, the, whether intentionally or by accident, we have some issues that have been arrived at this critical race discussion or teaching inadvertently or, or by choice, that... But I've got a couple of examples here, and I know that I spoke to these parents directly. This happened in a senior high. My girl left her phone on the table. A black came up, took the phone. The white child, I mean, the, uh, one of their classmates told the black, please, put that back. He said, "Why? Are you, are you accusing me of being black and stealing?" "No." But he took the phone, he had it in his hands. Where would that comment come from? I mean, we didn't have these issues before. Another example, uh, as you were, there was pink shirts being worn, I guess, a couple, three weeks ago. A person of color came up to a student that had a black, a pink shirt on. He said, "I want that shirt." And he, and the, the student said, "Why? Because I didn't get one, and I want one." And the guy, and he said, "You want it, you come over and take it from me." Where's this coming from? Another thing, and I'll, I'll give you one more example. There was, um, uh, there was, there was a person of color, a couple were kissing in the hallways, and then offended a student. The student spoke to a professional, and they said, "Well, just let it go, that's okay with them." Really? So this is some of the things, if, if, oh, like I said, I'll gladly sit down with you, because I've read at least two hundred legal documents, and I understand how this stuff works. Everybody wants equity, but there's a way of doing it rightfully and wrongfully. This isn't the right way. This needs to be addressed. And I guess, um, you know, I, I hear, and, and this is kind of a touchy issue, but I hear that black families have higher divorce rates, and then their, and their, their children are, are single moms and, or single dads. But that's not, I mean, that may be true, and I'm also told Asians have the highest staying together. That, that could be true, so everybody falls in between those two extremes. But are, are we to, to address that in our schools? Why? I don't, I don't know if that's appropriate. I don't want to be involved in a conversation such as that. I, I think, we, we can't be a social institution. We've got to look at education, and we want to talk about, you know, what has happened in history, a hundred percent. We want to talk about how slavery started in, in, in Africa, where warren tribes, they could make money by selling the captured folks, and they put them on a boat. Portugal, how Portugal and Spain were key in, in this, this trade. So there's a lot of things, should that be taught? Absolutely. Should anything be taught? Absolutely. There's no question about that, but this policy isn't going to do that correctly. And I guess I spoke for long, um, on, on some, what's, what's going on today nationally? Think about it. Somebody alluded to it in, in the discussions. Uh, the mayor of New York City said, you know, the white people and Asians are the only ones that are benefiting from gifted programs. So they're going to do away with that. Oh, really? All right, so now you're saying that these people are going to lose their opportunity to advance themselves because we've got to bring that down, so everybody has the same educational system. Not sure that's a good thing either. And shoplifting, you, every, well, not everybody, but if you're in business, you probably read how shoplifting has skyrocket uncontrollably. And especially in cities where there's a lot of people of color. What's, you know what's sad about that? It's because they don't want to prosecute. What's even sadder about that is most of these stores that are being closed are sto, are stores in inner cities that, that companies are pulling out of because they cannot operate these units. There's a lot of things going on, and I think if we sit down and actually discuss this, we can eliminate some of these things in this policy, but we've got two sides here. We've got one side, we're not budging, this is the way it's going to be, and you've got a couple other folks that say we, we need to address this issue. So we, as a school board, we as administration, we as teachers, shouldn't be we the ones that be working on this? Shouldn't we the ones be seeing what's wrong with our system? We're going to hire somebody that has, has their own perceived opinion on how things should be? You know, that's great, but to me, it all starts with our educational system. We need to determine what we're doing wrong. Nobody's told us what we're doing wrong yet. So with that, I thank you for my long-winded discussion, and I'll see you in a couple weeks. Thank you.
Any other comments? Or, or, Dr. Kennedy?
First of all, I want to point out about what two people brought up so far tonight about the New York system. This was actually something that was discussed in my class today, because we do current events. My kids bring in articles, and we talk about current events. In New York, uh, where you go to school is determined by how you do on placement tests. It's not like here where you just go to your neighborhood school. And an entire system for, um, upper-class parents has, has come about by test prep services on how to game the system and to get your student into these advanced classes as kindergartners in New York. IQ tests have long been found to be very biased, both culturally and economically, and this is exasperated by parents in New York who can afford to have their child, their four-year, four-year-old, because in New York, the cutoff is January first. So they're, they're having four-year-olds take IQ tests, and, and there's a whole system of how to, how to teach your child, how to test prep them, and how to get them into these elite schools. And Gifted was not gotten rid of by New York. The, what they did was they're not placing in gifted and talented-only schools in kindergarten, and they're starting gifted services in third grade. in kindergarten, and they're starting Gifted Services in third grade. So you have to finish and read the entire article. And also understand that New York's school system is very different than ours. I also find it ironic that we just started testing our students this year, correct, in kindergarten, the Gifted screener? We did start Gifted screening our students in kindergarten as a district. Our hope was that we would catch some of those students earlier that maybe we wouldn't catch if we caught them, you know, if we got them earlier. So I'm curious to see how this plays out both for our district and both for New York. I would like to take the opportunity, now that the equity policy is on the agenda, to thank everyone that was involved in the equity policy workshop. I was impressed by the intelligent and thoughtful discussion. I didn't get to talk to everyone in attendance, but I do want to thank my fabulous table group. I was with, it was awesome to be with a group of bulldogs with such diverse backgrounds. We had a retired business executive, a Wilson librarian, a marketing and development director from a nonprofit, a dispatcher from our own Wilson Transportation Department, and an absolutely brilliant high school student. And they were able to have, we were able to have meaningful discussions and accomplish a common goal. I'm smarter from having been able to learn from all of them. And I think our equity policy is stronger because of those who attended. I do want to note that the board was able to vote on individuals to attend. We did not have names of individuals of who applied. Also, several community members and parents who were chosen were not able to attend. And I do want to note too that there were 51 parent volunteers and only 10 community-only volunteers. After my positive experience at the equity policy workshop, I've been thinking a lot about why some community members, particularly longtime community members who may have gone through Wilson themselves or had children graduate already, why they may be having a difficult time understanding the need for an equity policy. I have four kids, and all four of them couldn't be more unalike in their school experiences and behaviors. My oldest had his 18th birthday a few days ago, and he has never uttered a word. But the things that he has learned from school have positively affected our family probably more than all the things the other three have learned combined. My third child spends time over the weekend on his own studying for a test and then asks me to quiz him at night, sometimes twice, and then again in the morning, even though at no time did he ever get a question wrong. And if his test is not perfect, it will be met with disappointment. Meanwhile, his older brother texted me the other day that he got a 71% on his social studies test with the caption, I am a genius. And the fourth, well, she's just so happy, darn happy to be in school because that's where her friends are. I can understand how people who have kids that are like my third, why they might be confused as to what is going on with the rest of us who have kids who don't do school well. Or perhaps, I should say, whose school wasn't made for. I can understand that those who went through Wilson and had a great experience may struggle to understand that some did not share that experience. I can understand how some of Wilson alumni, who have never experienced racism, may not believe it could actually happen here. They have an entirely different paradigm. They may not understand what it's like to have a child struggle and not fit in the public education mold. They may not realize that Wilson is doing a fantastic job teaching most of the kids at the top and most of the kids who need the most support. But we are not perfect. We are missing some of those kids who don't fit neatly in the made-for-school box, especially those at-risk kids who are from lower-income families. Your school experiences may be different, but you cannot discount others' experiences because they are not the same as your own. I'm asking our community to understand that Wilson isn't an apple pie that is sliced up and handed out. We are not taking a slice away from the top and giving it to those in the middle or the bottom. While we do have limited resources and a bevy of unfunded mandates, we don't just do pie here at Wilson. We do cake. We do fruit trays. Sugar-free, gluten-free, no nuts in case there's a peanut allergy. And even pudding for a kid like mine who doesn't chew. It's our job to use our resource, the resources and talents of our administration, faculty, and dedicated support staff to help each of our students be the best learner they can be. We need a thorough examination as a district as to who we are serving well and who we might be missing. I look forward to the administration gathering more data, like the data they shared with me regarding the disparity of our students taking summer school.
Thank you.
Mr. President, are we going to go through this line by line tonight?
No. Any major things changes, I can go to Dr. Faedley. Who would you like that information to go to? To you?
Yeah, if you have any questions or anything that needs to be clarified, please contact me and let me know what your questions are and what information I can provide for you.
And as we move along, we can make changes up to the final reading. Any other comments or concerns regarding these policies?
Just a quick comment. And again, I want to thank the community and everybody that was in that room going through that task force. You know, it's a great response. You know, I would not call this a misstep, you know, trying to put an equity policy together. You know, and I have to say, like, the first reading months ago, when we had it, I'm not even sure that, I thought there was a problem. And, you know, I've learned a lot with the community weighing in and having a great conversation, I think we all did. And then for the administration to come back and have a public forum, and then to have the community involved is a great thing. And, you know, that there's community input. So I want to just thank everybody for that gesture. So the question, though, that did come up, someone spoke earlier about guardrails. And I would ask the question, you know, we had some pricey, you know, trips coming up to Jamaica, to Disney in the past couple of weeks. $2,400 a pop. I know Jerry Slummer was on that trip many, many years ago. He came back and discussed with my wife, who is a science teacher. And he said, everybody should be able to go to that Jamaica trip. Now, that might have just been tongue-in-cheek. But just in general, I've been on that trip. It's a life-changing trip. And my question would be with regard to even Mr. Barton was saying, you know, just like in IT, you can spend an infinite amount of money trying to be secure, and you're never going to be 100% secure. At what point, what's the price, the dollar amount for a total equity policy? If we have a brilliant child socio-economic-wise that cannot afford to go, and they're going to be a doctor someday, and they can't go to Jamaica, is this, does this policy say, hey, you know, there's a price tag on here? We're going to $2,400 out of taxpayers', you know, budget? You know, at what point do we, and granted, you passed the equity policy, and we sit here as a board, and we can talk about financials each time something comes up. But just in general, where are the guardrails? Because it is quite an open policy. I'm all for it. It's just, can we talk a little bit about guardrails? Or what is going to be that process and procedure a year from now, two years from now, three years from now? That's really just, that's all I have.
Any other comments or concerns?
Oh, I just want to say to Mr. Case, I feel like one of the things we miss when we talk about the equity policy is that it's never going to be by itself. It's going to have to be in conjunction with curriculum. It's going to have to be in conjunction with the financial committee. It's not like a bully that comes down and says, I trump everybody else, and what I say matters. It's always going to have to go through the other channels and all the other committees. And just so you know, the idea of the field trip is something that we discuss multiple times, every time it comes up, on what do we do for those kids who can't afford. That we've had, even in just the two years that Mr. Schneider's been on, and Mr. Hart's, we talk about it every time a field trip comes up. And it hurts my heart to think about those kids who can't afford it. So it is, we don't have an answer yet. You know, we talk about the WF, we talk about fundraising, we talk about ways that we can encourage children, but we don't have the perfect answer yet. Just so you know, but the discussion's out there a lot.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Just, the way it's written, here's how it's written. Opportunity gap shall mean disparities in delivery of education and extracurricular opportunities and the funding and other resources between and among different student groups leading to different academic extracurricular, socioeconomic students. It's in here. It's written as such. You've got to give everybody the same opportunities. And this goes way above and beyond what the financial committee or any committee can do. It's in here. It's a mandate, an unfunded mandate. So anyway, that's, I have a whole list of these things, but we'll wait for the next meeting. I've got 22 items on this, okay?
And Mike, that's why I brought it. I'm just, I'm trying to understand the dollar value. Would we have a limit on this? I mean, is the sky the limit? Obviously, the sky's not the limit. But at some point, we have to have some sort of a guardrail and/or process and procedure, just like we have a board meeting every other week, you know, to talk about this financially. And there's a cost.
Anything else? All right. Any reports? Mr. Craig, you say something?
I love education. I love what education can do for a person, how it can change the trajectory of your whole life. My grandfather never made it to the ninth grade. Family issues meant he had to drop out of school and go to work on the family farm. Yet, he spoke two languages and was a whiz at math. When it came time for his daughters to begin their schooling career, he continuously preached the value of education. Both of his daughters turned out to be outstanding students. My mom ended up being the valedictorian of her high school class, earning a full scholarship to college, and then returned to her alma mater to teach for 35 years. Think about that. Valedictorians who may have the world as their oyster choosing to teach. Combined with my dad, my parents spent nearly 70 years educating literally thousands of students in Berks County. And years into their retirement, they continue to get notes and comments about how their dedication, both inside and outside the classroom, changed their students' lives. I'm glad there's people like my parents and the professional educators we have here at Wilson. Their job is not easy. Many parents, including myself, have often experienced how difficult it is to corral one or two of our own children and get them to do some activity they may not be all that enthused about. Try putting 20 or more five-year-olds, or better yet, teenagers, in a room and doing that day after day, year after year. I always said I don't have the patience to do it. That's why I couldn't go into teaching. It's frustrating when some look to besmirch some of our teachers with limited information or second- or third-hand conjecture. I'm proud that my children attend Wilson. My daughters have experienced nothing but amazing teachers here at Wilson. And if you've been one of them, thank you. These are teachers that cared about my children both as a student and as a person. People have asked me a lot over the past two years as to why I joined the school board. It's not because I enjoy four-hour meetings or analyzing budget disbursements. I did it because I was extremely happy with the outstanding education my daughters have received at Wilson. I did it because I think education can be a truly transformative and uplifting experience for many children. And I did it because I was impressed and most grateful with how much the teachers and the support staff that have worked with my daughters over the years were so deeply invested in their development and success in all aspects of their lives. That care and dedication is not something that we can just train on or somehow just acquire by paying a certain salary level. That dedication on students and their development comes from truly loving your job, having a passion for the success of our children, and being invested in an outstanding culture. If I could do anything to replicate that experience for every other child in the Wilson School District, no matter their background, that's why I'm on this board. Thank you is probably something that none of us say enough. So thank you to the team and community members for all of their work on wording these policies. Thank you to everyone who has spoken at various meetings and forums over the past months. No matter your position, getting up in front of a group of people and sharing your thoughts on delicate subjects is clearly not the easiest thing for most people to do. Thank you. The public forums we've had over the last few months, combined with the many emails sent my way, have brought additional insight to me on various topics. And I'm excited about the experiences to come, such as the forum next week on career readiness. After all, it's probably the one my grandfather would have been most interested in. No single administrator, or teacher, or even group of educators has all the answers. No group of nine board members has all the answers either. Wilson is better when it takes advantage of the strengths of a strong, diverse community who is willing to share its thoughts and insights. There are likely many things we won't get 100% agreement on, but that's okay. As many of us learned in history class, a famous person once said, democracy is messy. It's hard. It's not meant to be easy. No decision is likely ever final. We can grow and develop and learn more over time. As long as we are willing to work positively to continuously improve and support our kids, that's what I'm here for. Adity them to grow, be educated, informed from multiple perspectives, encouraging them to ask questions and working to empower them, to exceed even their own expectations. If we do all of that, then I believe we are going in the right direction for us as Wilson, and maybe even more importantly, for them, those students, as our future. Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Thank you. All right. Committee reports. Brooks Career and Technology Center, Mrs. Casper.
I have no report. Our next meeting is next Wednesday at East Campus.
Thank you. The enrollment report is attached. Sorry about that. Student Services, Dr. Hoffer.
Good evening. I came all the way up here to tell you we have no report. But we do have a tentative meeting schedule set up for the first Wednesday of the month at 4:00. Our first meeting will be November 3rd. Location TBD. That's all.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Can I just, I did want to just comment quickly about the equity policy and under policies and now that we just had a report from the Student Services Committee. And this could be something that we could continue to discuss maybe at a later time. But I noticed in Policy 832 that one of our efforts will be to create Equity's Own Committee. And I want to just kind of clarify what that process would entail. So, and again, that doesn't have to be answered today. But I do agree that Equity should have its own place in our committee reports. And I do believe that it is comprehensive and runs across almost everything we do in this district. So it shouldn't be placed under another committee. It should have its own. And also, considering the amount of time that we've spent scrutinizing this policy, I think it deserves its own place in a committee. So I did want to just add that I want to thank the board and the administration for this long process of getting to this point of the second draft of this policy. I just want to say that our board and our administration have done all that they can and continue to do right by our public in providing them a voice and giving them many opportunities to become more a part of this process. I've never before seen so much attention, time, and resources been given to any other policy. I hope that these past five to six months that it took to arrive at this second draft of Policy 832 can be a testament to the district's commitment to educational equity, to providing the public a space to be heard and to do right by all of our students. I also hope that we can find ways to amend our divisions and work together toward everyone's common goal of providing an accessible and achievable education for all of our students. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of the top-rated thoughts from our last thought exchange. So I'm going to quote. So, I'm going to quote the first one. "We need to come together and work together for the entire Wilson population. This Wilson demographic is diverse and getting more diverse. Be kind to everyone and think about all the students we represent. We all need to model good behavior for our children, our future citizens. It is important to care about all individuals. I think it's important to listen to one another and respect each other's position and perspective. Our lives, experiences, shape our views and positionality. Let's listen to our students and invite them to share their stories." So, I just wanted to add that. So, thank you, Brad.
Thank you. Berks County IU, Dr. Kennedy.
Sorry. Borrowing. The IU has not had a meeting, and the Curriculum Committee has not had a meeting, so I have no report on both of those. Thank you.
Thank you. Berks IT, Mr. Schlossman.
I have no report.
You're welcome. Extracurricular, Mrs. Cocker.
Our last extracurricular committee meeting was canceled, so I have no report.
Facilities, Mr. Negreney.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. We are having a joint Facilities and Finance meeting a week from today. I believe it's 4:30. Here in the boardroom, we'll be discussing the feasibility projects that have been discussed for some time, the bonds available for financing those potential projects. I believe we are looking forward to hearing back from administration in the near future regarding where we were well over a year ago in terms of what a potential restructuring of the district may look like, in terms of whether or not we're looking to add on, as Mr. Stoner had mentioned, whether about building, whether about renovations of current facilities in the district. So, we're continuing to gather information on that. No decisions have been made ultimately on those projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Martin.
Jay sent it off, so I may not say anything.
All right. Legislative, Mr. Martin.
Yes. There's a couple of things going on in the Senate right now in the House. There's, you know, charter school debates keeps going back and forth. It's like a yo-yo. Don't know what the outcome's going to be, but there's, you have to be neutral, well, I hate to use that term, but you've got to look at both sides of the equation, the pluses and the minuses for them, and that's what they're currently looking at. Because a lot of folks in both the Houses, as well as bipartisan support, believe there's a place for charter schools. So, whatever happens from that, it's the funding issue. It's not that there's so much, we get hung up on the charter schools, that they're good or bad. It's not how they're good or bad, it's how the funding works. And that's what hurts all school districts, is the mechanism for funding. That needs to be addressed. There's some other things that are coming, but they just got back in session today, so we're not sure exactly what's coming out of that. They're not in for a whole lot until the end of the year, but they'll be in about 15 days between now and the end of the year. One item that doesn't really impact schools, but is kind of a pet peeve for me, and it's the House bill to legalize marijuana. And depending on what side you're on, again, I'm not debating that, but basically, the benefits for the state are they expect to raise $1 billion through taxes, and that's why it's being pushed through. Whether, I'm not sure that that's the right reason for doing this, but it's one of my pet peeves, when we do something, whether or not it's in the best interest, it's to raise money for taxes. So, that's it for me.
Thank you. Human Resources, no report. Public Relations, Mrs. Trautman.
I just have a few items that I wanted to make the community and the Board aware of. First, our Transportation Department recently introduced a new parent app called Stop Finder. It provides real-time information and updates regarding a student's bus information. So, Stop Finder replaces Info Finder as the primary source for the most up-to-date information about your child's bus schedule. So, Stop Finder invitations were sent to all families via email today, and you can contact the Wilson Transportation Department if you have any questions, but we are all looking forward to bringing this new tool to our families. I have two community events that I wanted to make you aware of. First, we're excited to announce that the Wilson High School Marching Band will be hosting Sound Panorama on October 23rd from 5:45 to 10:00 p.m. at Kerski Stadium. There will be 13 bands in the Calvatica Bands Competition, and our very own Wilson Band will be performing their show exhibition entitled Meta Heist at approximately 9:15 p.m. Tickets are available at the gate, and we really hope to see many of our community members there to support our high school band. Our Wilson High School Junior ROTC will be hosting the 19th Annual Berks County Veterans' Appreciation Dinner Dance from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. in the Wilson High School Gymnasium on Saturday, November 6th. This is always a fantastic event. Tickets can be purchased in the high school office between 8:00 and 3:00 p.m. on any school day or at any Berks County Boskov's Department store. Again, we're looking forward to the opportunity to honor our veterans at this wonderful community event. And then, just a reminder that the Wilson School District will be holding a community forum on Tuesday, October 26th, beginning at 6:00 p.m. right here in the boardroom. The forum will address career readiness for our students, and we'll be sharing information about our goals in this area, and we'll be looking to solicit community feedback and questions regarding career readiness. Thank you.
Thank you. Education Foundation, Mr. Case.
Yes. Last Saturday, the Education Foundation had their fantastic Bulldog Bash. It was a success. A lot of the folks in the room and up here at the table were at the event, and I have to say, it's been a hard year. It's been a tough year for administration, for the Board, for teachers, for parents, for community members. And the Education Foundation just has a way of making that all go away for a night and breaking bread and having a good time celebrating Dr. Stacy Stoudt and our Teachers of the Year, David Cooper and Kara Stalter. It was a fantastic evening, and everyone had a lot of fun. It was nice to kind of get the masks off and be outside at the Fiden fills and just celebrate everything about what we do great here at Wilson. So, it was a good night. They raised a lot of money. We'll find out some numbers and details at the next meeting, which is November, it's in November. I'll give an update next time, when exactly that date is. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And Technology, Mr. Schneider.
I have no report.
Student Outreach, Mrs. Maddie Negreney.
This week at the high school, as the fall season is coming to a close, many of our high schools' athletic teams are either in the midst of or are preparing for their upcoming county championships to represent our school. The girls' field hockey team is competing tonight in the county quarterfinal, and both the girls' soccer team and the cross-country teams for both boys and girls will be competing in their respective county games and meets tomorrow. In addition, shifting gears to the music department of the high school, the band orchestra and chorus are all preparing for their upcoming fall concerts the first weekend of November. They've been preparing with these pieces since early September, and these concerts are always a really great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Participation, Mrs. Cocker, do we have any?
We do.
Okay, hold on.
Want me to read the whole thing again? Rules of public participation. Individuals attending the meeting are expected to conduct themselves in a responsible, respectful manner. Public comment is not questioned and served as opportunity to offer comment on matters that are, may come before the Board. All comments must be directed to the Board as a body and not to individual Board members or administrators. Clapping, calling out, cheering is not permitted. Individuals may not approach the Board tables. Individuals should make their comments from the podium. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Any person making any threats, offensive or impertinent matter becoming unruly may be removed. Above expectations are found in Board Policy 903.
Thank you. Mrs. Cocker.
Good evening. I just want to share with you all that the new equity policy that you are re-challenging to introduce does not include my daughter. It doesn't cover her background, and it needs to include every child that goes to Wilson. We have to take care of our children. The last board meeting, one of the Board members spoke about, I believe his word was blurb. He used quite a bit. Just blurbs, just political propaganda. This is not blurbs. These are all the assignments our daughter had while she was in Ms. Dennis's class. I can't bring it to you, but if you'll give me another hour, we can review these, and you can show me where these are not divisive. You can show me where this is not racist. Again, we have an election coming up November 2nd, and some of you need removed. Our children need to be united, not divided, and this is a perfect example of the delivery system some of you are trying to use. I'm going to leave it here. After the board meeting, I would encourage you all to come up here and look through these. You okayed this 11th-grade curriculum. CRT does not belong in our schools. Some of you have proved that you have your political party, and that's where your loyalty lies, and you have put that ahead of our kids. Some of you are amazing. You are open to listening to parents, to hear our concern, to hear the issues that we voice. None of you reached out to us as far as what happened to our daughter. None of you. We took the proper channels. If a teacher permits a child to be called racist for their point of view or their opinion, then the parents need to take the proper channels. You owe Amy an apology. Amy did that. Amy spoke to the English Department Director. I have the emails to show you. I wanted her in a meeting. I wanted her English teacher in a meeting. I wanted her resource teacher in a meeting. But you never reached out to us either. So, for us, this is about our daughter, not politics. Again, November 2nd's an election. We need people with solutions. We need people who are going to find a common ground for all parents involved for their children. We need people on this board who are going to fight for all the kids and not create divisive That's what we need. I'm not a political person, but I'm up here for my child and many other children like her. If you're going to try to come up with an equity policy, you have to include all the kids, not just one, not two, not three. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to address something said by a Board member on October 4th, that we co-parent with our teachers. It's just not correct. We have some of those fabulous teachers, but they're not our children's parents. It's great that they care, and I'm so thankful for that, but again, they're not co-parents. Good teachers hold a special place in our hearts, but they're not the parents. One of my kids was 10 and 1/2 pounds. I'm not sharing that with anybody. That was my feat there. But anyway, as parents, we have the ultimate say, not the government, not this Board, and not our teachers. Remember that. It was also inferred at the last board meeting, the parents who come and speak to oppose different topics at these meetings don't support our teachers. That is also incorrect. We appreciate our teachers so much. I personally have only had positive experience with my children's teachers. My husband and I think very highly of them, as they possess the patience of saints. It's something I don't have. Next to parents, teachers, coaches, and other youth leaders are highly influential to children. Again, my family's only had positive experiences, but the reason I'm here is to see that that stays that way, because other students and parents haven't been so lucky, as you just heard. We have given you examples of teachers in Wilson who have overstepped with their own political agenda. Appropriate steps were taken by parents. The first step was not the airing of grievances, I know I sound like Seinfeld here, on social media. In fact, that was the last step. They were hushed and ignored, so there's context on that in case you can't keep up. The Reading Eagle recently published an article ranking local schools. Randy stole my thunder on that, Randy. Thank you. Shiloh Hills, Spring Ridge, and Wilson West ranked fairly well. That was so awesome to see. However, what about the other schools in Wilson? We could work together, put a plan in place to address that and correct that, but this Board rather focus on leftist social agenda than education.
One minute.
That's basically my nice way of saying your equity plan still needs a lot of work. This Board's equity plan still leaves a door open for anything and everything, and that's what we don't want. As far as a lot of people in this room, they think that equity is needed, but a lot of it, we already have it. A lot of it, I classify it as business management issues, and they're done for all students to succeed in this district, because that is what we want. Experience does matter, but when it's good experience, you learn something from a negative, excuse me, experience does matter when it's a good experience, or you learn something from a negative experience. The Wilson community hasn't experienced good in a while. This Board still hasn't learned its lesson. We've had enough, we've had basically enough of you. One of you, I've been coming to these meetings for four months, and I've never heard you speak until tonight, more than one sentence. It's time for a change. It's time for transparency. It's time for Wilson to be the district it should be again. Vote them out, vote the right ins in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Chivinsky, General Comment, Community.
Good evening again. A lot of talk about last meeting two weeks ago. I was called a troll and attacked five times. I was interrupted by a Board member, but they did apologize. I appreciate that. We had some dialogue afterwards over email, very productive. I also want to apologize. My wife and I have our own policy that if you screw up or you make an error, you have to own that, and you have to say it out loud. I made a mistake by taking the bait laid out to me by the bad actor that spoke last week. That made me deviate a little bit from my comments, and I did personally attack him, which is against the rules. I apologize for that. I do appreciate everything that you all do, and I hope and will also be voting for all of you that are up for reelection, to be re-elected. I encourage everyone else to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick Lehman, Critical Race Theory.
I think we all know that there are parts of American history which are so beautiful. There are also parts which are messy and confusing. If a teacher's including the messy and confusing portions in their curriculum, that does not mean they're teaching critical race theory. They're not the same thing.
Thank you.
So, it really comes down to one single question. Where does a school institution look forward to itself in the community? Are you to solve socioeconomic status? Is an equity policy supposed to do it? You know, on this vacation thing, or not vacation thing, this trip thing to Jamaica, I got the answer for you. Break the hearts of the 24 students who want to go, because the other 400 or 500 can't or aren't in the class. There's a saying, right? Live by the sword, die by the sword. Live by the equity policy, die by the equity policy. I mean, seriously, if it, I mean, follow your own rules. It is really that simple. As far, I can't believe that there was not a single word of debate on what I presented from your teachers' mouths. Now, maybe as a Board and as a group, you wouldn't comment on it, because I brought it forward, and you didn't have the chance to see that information. If I'm a Board member, and I've not seen that information that I shared, I'd be really looking at the handful of Board members that do have it and asking them why it's not shared out. Why, as a Board, do not all nine of you have the ability to view that information? I think that's a very fair and reasonable question. Moreover, if you all had it, how can you all possibly preside over this body and enact an equity policy when the two distinct campuses have their own budgets, which lead to inequity, and you still let that happen? So, it's really not a question of saying, "We're going to fix socioeconomic status." Yourselves, let little examples like the trips to Jamaica continue on year after year, because it's hard to find a solution. Well, the solution's in front of you. Just say no. Stop it. Now, I'm not advocating for that, but that is the only answer, unless you're just going to approve the budget for everybody to go, in the entirety of the Wilson senior class In the entirety of the Wilson senior class, or whatever grade goes, maybe that's their senior trip. And taxpayers, or somehow it needs to be paid. I mean, this is the slippery slope we go down. And I'm really, really interested, and I'm not going to do the work for you. I'm not sending you this information. You all can ask the other people that have it to send it to you. I'm not doing your work for you anymore. I'm not following protocol anymore. Because when I try to have conversations, and when I have conversations with certain administrators, they take away a different outline than I do. And it's good that in the quiet moment of the privacy of my office, I didn't record the phone call, because if I would've, what I could really bring to light would really disturb a few people. But because I've got that integrity, I didn't record it. Maybe I should've. Come to find out, I could have legally still played it. You guys need to do some work on this policy still.
Thank you.
So I feel like it was easy to lose focus when you're only concentrating on your own personal views. Wilson is a very large community. If you take a minute and think about all the different developments and how the people living there all have different points of view. I've had the pleasure of talking to numerous community members, and I can tell you one thing that they definitely have in common, the well-being of the children. This school wouldn't exist without the children who attend it. Parents are out there trying to make a difference for their kids, but are being labeled as extreme, violent, narrow-minded, misinformed, right-wing terrorists. Heard it a lot. Since when is wadding the best for our children considered taboo? Being in a position of power does not mean you get to dictate what occurs in the school. What it does mean is that you have the opportunity to work with the parents and community members to bring the best possible outcome to light. If we could shift the focus and direct it back towards the children instead of personal agendas, we could gain some serious ground. I've heard many stories about recent bullying issues, and I actually saw one of them firsthand. There are certain adults who have been bullied lately. What kind of example does that set for the kids? If we are unable to handle our emotions and lash out in fear and anger, how do we expect to shape and model students to be any different? We need to lead by example. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is difficult to read. The first name starts with an M, the last name starts with an S, and the topic is meeting. Maybe Moon...
Looks like Moon... Mume's.
Mume's.
Small. Or Stal.
No? Okay. And then last is Crystal Dunkelberger, School Security.
Hi, good evening. I'm here tonight because I want to be a stand for stricter school security and transparency, and I also want to clarify the truth regarding an email sent out to Wilson families on October 8th by the principal in regards to police presence on October 7th. The email assures parents that the incident happened off-campus and did not involve any Wilson student or staff, when in fact, the incident started at Wilson Senior High, when the school's social worker, Michelle, released my son, a senior at Wilson, to two people claiming to be his aunt and uncle that he'd been staying with for the past week. And they took him, they wanted to take him to Reading Hospital for a psychiatric evaluation. Sorry. That morning, I had received a message from my son, that he felt he needed to 201 commit himself. I had COVID, and I had sent my, I had sent him to my brother's house for the week, and he had been avoiding me and just acting so weird, and I called the guidance office, and I left a message for them to please pull him out of class and find out what was going on, and call me when he was in the office, so we could figure out what kind of help to get him. Michelle only attempted to call me one time and was unable to reach me. She didn't leave a message, and she never tried to call the second emergency contact listed. She instead let my son vouch for who these people were and let him leave. Let me remind you, my son was not in a healthy mental state and was very fragile. When she was able to reach me, she explained that she released him to his aunt and uncle Heather and Robert that he'd been staying with, and they were taking him to Reading Hospital. I then told her I had no idea who these people were, and what was she talking about? He was staying with his aunt and Uncle Jason and Alyssa because I had COVID. She then asked if I was kidding and began to backtrack, and I said, "How could you let him go with anybody without talking to me first?" I told her I was calling the police. I was able to find out who this woman Heather was, and I called her, and pleaded with her to bring him back and to let his real aunt take him to the hospital, since I couldn't. She refused. She screamed at me, and she blocked my number. This couple had my son for over an hour and never actually took him to the hospital. They only brought him back when the school, they only brought him back when the police called them and told them to return him to the school. When Michelle was questioned, she changed what she told me, and she told the cops that they said they were family friends. And Dominic told me after leaving the hospital that he was, he called into the office because his aunt and uncle were there to pick him up, and he was expecting to see Jason and Alyssa. Statistically, most abductees know their abductors, and even though he vouched for them, multiple policies and procedures were violated by releasing my son to people who weren't on my release list without my knowledge, without my permission, without talking to me, especially after a voicemail was left to please call me because of my son's safety. No one from the school has contacted me about this situation, and the school has tried to cover it up with a false email. At least my son was brought back. This ending may not be for everybody. So what is the point of having policies in place to keep our kids safe if you're not going to follow them?
Any other business before the board?
Thank you. I got a call, two calls this past two weeks about how we're handling COVID in the schools. Now, I'm not sure our policy is working well from the standpoint that a person, a lunch person across from a student tested positive, even though they were vaccinated, and she was sent home because she was close to him in the vicinity. Her mom said she's being punished by the school because she was not vaccinated, while all the other students around her were vaccinated, but they did not have to be quarantined. That's the issue. We all know that the student from her, across from her, had COVID, and they transmitted. So, we need to either fix this or require a mask during lunch, because this is wrong, what we've done, by sending this student in quarantine home, while other people, even though, because they had the shot, were allowed to stay in school, even though they could carry the virus. We've got to fix those issues. That's it. More later.
Thank you. Any other business before the board? Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Schneider, so moved.
Schneider first, and second.
Cocker.
This is Cocker. Thank you, everyone, for tonight.